Good afternoon, everybody. We'll call the Planning Commission to order. And Julie, will you call a roll?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Pujol.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan, absent. Commissioner Higgins.
Here.
Vice Chair Campanella, absent. Chair Thompson.
Here. Ms. Calarte, are there any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
And any announcements?
No announcements today.
Okay, thank you. Next item is a review of the minutes for the draft, the draft minutes for the special meeting of June 25th. I'll say that I have several minor typo kind of corrections, and I showed them to Ms. Rodriguez, and I'll give her those after we finish discussing. Any other corrections?
Mr. Chair, I'll be abstaining since I was absent from the June 25th meeting.
Okay. And Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also had a few minor typos that I told Ms. Rodriguez about, and they have been fixed.
Okay. Unless there's any other changes, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Abstention?
One abstention. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the annual allocation of unused or expired non-residential small addition square footage. Ms. Calarte, are you giving the presentation?
Chair Thompson, Mr. Adam Naras will be giving the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Thompson and members of the Planning Commission, here to present the allocation of unused square footage of small addition. The purpose of this meeting is to allocate the 33,426 unused small addition square feet for the years 2013 and 2014 to either the community benefit category or to roll over to the small addition category. Some background, the General Plan Policy, LG2, limits the non-residential growth and establishes allocation categories such as small and community benefit. The Growth Management Plan Resolution, 13010, states that the PC shall determine annually if unused expired small additions should go to the community benefit or the small addition category for the following year. A little bit about small addition. Small additions are only allowed in the downtown and airport development areas. They are allocated 20,000 square feet per year, 400,000 square feet total to the year 2033, and they're allowed only 2,000 square feet per lot. A little about community benefit. Community benefit is allocated by council, by resolution, that have already exhausted their small addition allocations. These are allocated, excuse me, 600,000 square feet to 2033. There are three different categories of community benefit. The first one is community priority. These are projects that include nonprofits, museums, et cetera. Community development, excuse me, economic development projects. These are projects that would strengthen the local economy, create jobs, and/or increase the city's revenue base. And planned development category, these are for new automobile sales. This is a chart of the allocated community benefits that have been allocated in the past two years. The first project is the Santa Barbara Museum of Art, which is approved. The second project is the Tesla Motor Dealership at 400 Hitchcock Way. And the third project is the Direct Relief Nonprofit Project in Hollister Avenue near the airport. So the total allocated comes out to about 21% of the 600,000 total, and unallocated is 79%. So far, what has happened in 2015? Of the 20,000 allocated in small additions, there's still 12,000 that remains unallocated, about 12,000. There is a potential community benefit project that has not been allocated their square footage, but it's another dealership in Hitchcock Way, about 24,000 square feet, which would reduce the community benefit to about 444,710. So the staff recommends that by resolution, the Planning Commission allocate the entire unused small additions for the years 2013, 2014 to the community benefit category. Next steps, the staff will return in 2016 for the reallocation of the unused 2015 and expired square feet. This concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the staff? Commissioner Pujol?
Thank you. Just a couple of preliminary questions, and I might have a few others later when we get more into the deliberations. But for at least my benefit, and maybe as a refresher for some of the others, the unallocated remainder that we're looking at today, first of all, I didn't see a typical recommendation section in the staff report. Did I hear staff just say now that the recommendation of staff is to allocate it to community benefit? And also, since I think this is the first time we're doing this, is it a vote like other actions? What is our procedure?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Pujol. It would be a motion of your Planning Commission to decide the majority of whether you want this square footage to be allocated to the small addition for next year or to the community benefit total pot. The decision really is ultimately up to you, but we thought we would, and we didn't include that in the staff report, but after further thinking about it, we thought, we just wanted to put out there a recommendation. And the reasons that we would consider, that we think for this year at least that it would be good to go to the small addition is that, as you know, the small additions can only be allocated to two areas of town. They can be allocated to the airport, and they can be allocated to the downtown area. What we're seeing in the downtown area is many times the properties are redeveloping with housing and actually less commercial square footage. So we don't think that, at least we're halfway through the year, we don't think there's a potential of running out. We haven't been running out of small additions over the past few years, whereas in community benefit, there seems to be a larger need now. And we almost did exhaust, through Mejerie, you know, we had Mejerie before this program, and we exhausted, I have the numbers, more than two-thirds of the community benefit, whereas we only used half of the small additions for the total 20 years. So we just thought we'd want to put out there for you to consider that perhaps for at least the 2013 and the 2014, that you might consider rolling it over to the community benefit. But ultimately, it is a motion of your Planning Commission in which pot you'd like it to go to.
Okay, thank you. My second question is this, not having been on the commission at the original adoption of this. I read through all the materials and the ordinances and the resolution that preceded the ordinance, but what is a little unclear for me still through the reading is the Planning Commission recommendation to allocate it to the small addition or the community benefit category. What exactly are choices in there? Like if we say, "Don't allocate any of it," is that one of the choices? Or is it that if we don't allocate it to the small additions, then by default it goes to the community benefit category? I didn't quite understand that from reading the materials. And then it's part two of that same question is, is it all or nothing? So does it all roll over, or can a portion of it roll over?
Commissioner Pujol, just a little bit of background. During Mejerie, the 1989, the previous one, expired small addition used to roll over to economic development. So any expired projects, small additions that were unused or expired, rolled over to economic development. So when we went through the general plan update, this decision was made of, you know, the different allocations. And at that point, it was decided that your commission should have a choice of any unused small addition. Do we want it to roll over to economic development, which is now wrapped into the whole community benefit? Or do we want it to be available to small additions if they get exhausted every year? So it really is your decision, and if it's an all or nothing, that also is your decision. You could choose to divide it in half. It's however you want it, and which of those two you want it to go to.
I see. But, and I mean, the first part I didn't quite get answered completely, and so let me ask it this way. If we don't reserve it for the small addition category, does it automatically go to the community benefit category? Is that what happens automatically? Or if we don't do, if we say no to both, does that mean that that unused allocation disappears?
Commissioner Pujol, it'll just remain unallocated, because the small addition is the only category that does have a limit. It's 20,000 per year. So if you don't roll the 2013 through 2014, it remains unallocated. So that at the end of Mejerie, there will be some small addition left.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions. Mr. Naras and Ms. Calarte were kind enough to answer most of my questions prior to the hearing today. So I just, on the Tesla Motors, our staff report says approved, but that is now pending, so we'll see how that turns out when there's closure for that.
Would you like me to follow up on that?
Yes, please.
Yeah. It's a phased project. It has two phases. One is an interior remodel. The second is the square footage enclosure of the bays. So when we did the staff report, we saw that the first one was approved for the tenant improvements, but the second phase is not, so I thought it would be more appropriate to call it pending.
Okay. And am I correct that if we allocate a portion or all of the unused square footage to community benefit, we do not need to identify, say by percentages, community priority versus economic development, which we have on page two of our staff report?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Those subcategories, I guess we might see them.
That's correct. We don't have the three subcomponents by percentages. It's just one main allocation pot.
Okay.
And the council will decide when.
Okay, I have two more questions. The next one is, and I briefly discussed this with Mr. Naras, community priority versus economic development. I understand that we're largely looking at commercial proper, commercial square footage, but I did notice under economic development, and now I'm looking at page three of the staff report, so this is BD, small D, that housing is included in that last paragraph. The purposes of the section standard of living is defined as, and then it goes on to include, this is housing. So could you talk to me a little bit about how housing is included here, but in general we're looking at commercial square footage? And I raise this because certainly with a dire shortage of rental housing inventory in Santa Barbara, it would be of great interest to me to include housing in this, or to consider, I should say, housing in looking at reallocation.
Commissioner Schwartz, the non-residential growth management program is completely non-residential. When, if the city council were to consider a project for economic development, it could enhance the standard of living for housing. I don't know. It could be a new educational, it's just a general statement to improve the standard of living, but it was never intended that this non-residential growth management program be allocated to residential.
Well, I know that's why I was curious to see the word housing.
Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Vincent.
I think I can add some historical perspective to this, is that at the time that the general plan update was being considered, there was a project proposed next door to the MTD bus station. It was proposed as a mixed-use project with commercial square footage being placed on the parking lot, the surface parking lot there, and having housing on the upper floors above the commercial square footage. What I would say is this conversation or this discussion and the definition of standard of living that's offered in the non-residential growth management ordinance is a reflection of that kind of program where the non-residential square footage proposed in that project was offered as a means of making the affordable housing on the upper floors affordable. And so in this context, or in the context of such a project, a proponent of such a project could propose non-residential commercial square foot, non-residential square footage as an economic or a community benefit, either as economic development or as a community priority, with the explanation that that non-residential square footage was making the affordable housing affordable, and that that would be increasing the standard of living by that definition in the ordinance.
So the mixed use is that blend of commercial and residential, okay. Okay, and then lastly, either Mr. Naras and Ms. Calarte, could you describe or perhaps educate both me and I think the public at large as to how applicants who may be interested in development with a community benefit orientation, let's say, or added incentives tied to community benefit, how would they learn of this as they come to the city? Is this something proactively offered by community development planning, or does the public have to find out some other way?
Commissioner Schwartz, like many city programs and ordinance, it really comes more into play when an applicant either comes to our counter, calls us, sets up meetings, when they're actually a proponent of a project or considering a project. We have a website where people can see the different programs available, and the growth management program is one of our key elements. But that we go out and, I mean, we educate when we're going to have changes to it or an open house through the general plan. I mean, it was a huge component of our general plan. It was the reason we started the general plan, was because what was going to replace Mejerie. But that we go out and, you know, specifically educate on this one program, not necessarily. It really is, as a project, as an applicant proposes to, you know, we have a resolution that implements the growth management program, specifies the steps to get this allocation from city council, which we've actually simplified it in the past. You had to go through a two-step process. You got an initial, the city council gave you an initial blessing on the community priority, and then you had to come back at the end. Now, once you're allocated a community benefit, you go on with your project process, and there's no need to return to the city council.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now.
Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I was reading over the background material, I was thinking, well, why not give half to the community benefit category and the other to the small addition category? But in your explanation of why you made the recommendation, you did. You do not see the need in the community in the small addition segment, is that, if I understand you correctly?
I mean, Adam, you can correct me, but we have, I think, 12,000 left for this year, and I don't think there's any pending projects requesting small additions. They'd have to be downtown. What we're seeing downtown really is the housing projects and mixed use that are replacing existing commercial square footage. Next year--
It's a good thing, as far as I'm concerned.
That is a good thing. I agree. And next year, there will be another 20,000 square feet. And again, we haven't been running out. I mean, that's why we're here. We've had square, but it's completely up to you of who you'd like to allocate to or which pot.
All right, well, then I understand where you're coming from on the recommendation. I do want to throw in something in addition to what Mr. Vincent said about the background. This all came about, and it had nothing whatsoever to do with residential. It was, the city council had in 1975 sharply limited the amount of residential development that it could occur. But, and we were, the recommendation from the task force that prepared the Impacts of Growth Report was that we, at the same time, tackle the commercial end of it, because it is the increase in growth or growth of commercial activity that creates more jobs, that creates more demand for more housing. And so we were only, in '75, we only handled sort of one side of the equation. And it wasn't until 1989 with Mejerie, many years later, and I'm not sure just why it took so long, that we really addressed the issue. And by adopting Mejerie, which was to restrict the amount of commercial development in order to restrict the number of new jobs that were created, to try to keep a balance, in this jobs-housing balance equation, that we adopted the restrictions that were Mejerie and that have been carried forward in the, basically, in the new general plan. Thank you.
Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you. What's the, how does the calendar work in terms of the allocation? So if somebody comes in and applies for it, that's when it's allocated? Or does it have to be allocated at that time of the approval discretionary? Can you give me a little background about how that works?
Commissioner Higgins? When, it depends what type of application is being submitted. If it's a concept application, like a concept at design review, we do not allocate it at that time. We allocate it at the time of a formal application. So at the time that, if it's a planning commission project, like for a development plan, it's when it submits for the DART process, the Development Application Review Team. If it's a design review, already asking for the develop, because designer review can do the development plans too, depending on size, then we allocate it at that time. So as soon as a project comes in for a formal application, it's allocated.
So then you don't, you won't take in an application if you're already at the allocation for that year? The applicant would have to wait to the following calendar year to apply?
That's correct, for small additions. It's really just small additions.
And have you ever come into a situation where that annual allocation is, people are now, you know, queuing up for January 1?
In the mid-'90s, I think we had two or three years where we ran out, and we had people lined up.
And you're just--
Before our office opened, and we had a reallocation list. And we were very strict on the timelines. If the action wasn't taken, it would go back into the pots. But we had about three years of running out of our square footage.
Commissioner Schwartz, more questions?
Listening to Mr. Higgins' question, so if we were to, today, to allocate some of the unused or unallocated to small addition versus community benefit, do staff have a recommendation as to percentage, given what happened in the mid-'90s versus what the trend that we've been seeing over the last, I don't know, five-plus years? And kind of, I don't know if you can look ahead, that's always a little difficult, but any thoughts for us to help inform our decision today?
Before, before the growth manager program, under the Mejerie, we had 30,000 per year for small additions. If you wanted to be conservative, I would consider 10,000 to small additions for next year and the rest to community priority. But again, it really is up to you.
Thank you.
But to clarify, we can only allocate 20,000 small addition square footage per year, and only in the downtown and the airport.
That's correct. And in additional--
Putting more square footage doesn't mean that you can use more square footage. There's still a cap, 20,000 square feet per year.
Yes, but it might be more than 20,000 a year from a previous year. So if you roll it over, 10,000 to next year, it could be 30,000, but it's still no more than the initial allocation.
Right. Okay, Commissioner Higgins, another question?
All right, last question. Sorry, it's escaped me. Give me a second. I'll pass, it's gone. I'll maybe come back to it if I have a minute.
When you think of it, just speak up, okay. At this point, we would have public testimony. Do we have any written correspondence or any speaker slips? Seeing none, we'll close that. Bring it back to the commission for discussion and a motion. Commissioner Higgins?
I remembered. Did you, did staff, did you do any outreach to the Chamber of Commerce or any other organizations about their opinion about which way to allocate?
No, we did not.
Commissioner Pujol?
Okay, yes, thank you. I have, I have two additional questions here. The first one has to do with, basically gets to that allocation timing and system that Commissioner Higgins was bringing up earlier. So from my understanding in the resolution, please correct me if this is not right, is that the allocations for the small additions need to be applied for in January of each year? Is that correct? No?
Commissioner Pujol, no, that's, that's when the 20,000 becomes available, but it's first come, first served as applications come in.
Oh, I see. Okay.
But when we, in those three years, we talked about that we were running out, it was the day after the holiday, that's when they were allocated, and they did run out the first day.
I see.
But currently, on January 1, or whatever, the first workday, we will have 20,000 square feet available, and it just keeps going as projects come in.
I see, okay. And on that topic, for 2015, so we're doing this, we're having this discussion about 2013 and 2014 allocation pools, right? And we're already in 2015, it's already halfway through the year. So what do we know about 2015? I know that's not part of what we're doing today, but to get a sense, a complete sense of the underutilization of the last few years, is there anything that you know about 2015 so far that would give any insight?
Commissioner Pujol, if I can refer you to the slide. This is the status for 2015. Of the 20,000 available for this year, 2015, 12,000 remain unallocated, so roughly 8,000 have been allocated.
Okay. Okay, so it's just a little bit more than halfway, I suppose. Okay. So my, my last question really has to do with a little quirky thing that I came across when I was going through some of the documents. It just kind of dawned on me this morning. In the descriptions of community benefit, I believe, maybe overall, there's reference to community gardens. Now, as we're calling back last month, when we were talking about the draft, new draft zoning ordinance and Module 1 on the uses, we also had a discussion in that workshop about community gardens and market gardens. So when you interpret this, are we saying that a community garden is a construction project that falls within the realm of the allocation program? Or is it only if they have a building that adds square footage to the lot?
Commissioner Pujol, the only time an allocation is necessary if it's enclosed floor area.
Okay.
So it would really have to be like a community market at a larger scale that they're going to make, maybe like, I don't know, if Tri-County was growing all of their vegetables on site, then that building would need an allocation, unless they had a small addition.
Unless there's under 1,000 square, or minor addition as well.
Minor or small, correct.
Right, which would be under 1,000 square feet. So they had some little outbuildings or something under 1,000 square feet, that would be okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If none, then we have a motion? Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Planning Commission concur with the staff recommendation and roll over the unused small addition square feet to the footage to the community benefit category.
Okay. Commissioner Higgins?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Commissioner Schwartz?
No, thank you. I was ready to vote.
Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Excuse me?
Chair, I have a comment.
Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you. Just, I feel as though the definitions for community benefit are broad enough that I think we're safe in moving it all in that direction. Maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong. It seems fairly broad, and so my assumption-- It seems fairly broad, and so my assumption, and correct me if I'm wrong, there, it is, the categories are fairly broad, so there's, so there's not an inherent conflict for commercial developers when they run across the difference between a small, small project or a community benefit project. It's fairly easy to make that leap to community benefit for your commercial applicants over the last few years, and I apologize for making that in the form of a question, but is my assumption accurate?
No, community benefit is a little, it has a little more standards it has to meet. Some of your small addition project, like a general retail project, probably would not qualify for community benefit.
Unless it's limited in local supply.
Unless it's, unless it meets the economic development, that it's providing--
Or it supports a small and local business in Santa Barbara community--
Correct.
Which is being started, maintained, relocated, redeveloped, or expanded.
Correct.
Cool. Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Pujol, discussion?
Yes, just a comment I wanted to make on the, before we vote. I just wanted to mention that I was actually pleased with the staff recommendation we got in here today, because in going through the documents, it did seem to make most sense to me for, at this point in time, for the allocation to be rolled over to the community benefit. And when I was looking at it, I thought, well, the demand is low. It may be low for the next few years. As a matter of fact, I think it takes quite a surge of development probably for it to get to the point of a lottery. And I remember the mid-'90s, and that was a big development boom on the South Coast. And in looking at just the numbers, the numbers for the small additions are very, very low for the last couple of years, whereas for the community benefit, it appears that even in the last couple of years, there's a little bit higher demonstrated need in that, I know there's no cap on those, but if you took the 600,000 total, I think, for that category and kind of prorated it out, that's about 30,000 or so square feet a year, and I think we're just about there, a little over that for the last couple of years, at least my math before the slide presentation today. So that makes a lot of sense for me. And not only that, but just to mention that, you know, with the drought and our water supplies at risk, basically, for the next probably couple of years, even with, if El Nino comes, I think it's just a smart thing to do to provide for a system where those allocations would be subject to a higher test of benefit. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay. Any, any further discussion on the motion? A motion by Lodge, second by Higgins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the administrative agenda. Since Commissioner Jordan is absent today, I guess we will not have a staff hearing officer liaison report. Do we have any other committee and liaison reports? Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, for two meetings of the Historic Landmarks Commission, July 1st. At that meeting, there were two projects that were discussed and will be coming to us. One is 634 Ana Capa Street, with the, where the Cravieoto Iron Works used to be. And what's proposed is a mixed-use building totaling almost 21,000 square feet with 6,000 square feet of ground-level commercial space and 25,000 square feet of residential space on the second and third level. So the total of 30 units. Planning Commission conceptual review is required on that one. It's an AUD project. And then the next item that will be coming to us is 116 Castillo. It's the Days Inn Motel. It's a very simple, one-story motel that is going to be demolished and replaced with a three-story hotel kind of development. One of the commissioners commented that the existing building violates just about every guideline of El Pueblo Viejo, as it is, and that the new building will be a significant That one will be coming to us for review of the coastal development permit, development plan, and interior setback modifications. At the meeting on July 15th, they had a discussion of an item that was sent back to them by the City Council after all of the discussion about the mural that appeared on Cajun Restaurant over at Chapala and Cánar Verdito. And the, the council directed, was that the, they thought that the guidelines were too restrictive. And so there was considerable discussion about that, and staff will be preparing some new guidelines. Some of the comments made were things like art in El Pueblo Viejo is good, not all art is good. Pretty obvious, obvious one. And another was that art inside a museum is not exposed to the public, and so there's much more impact from something put on a building or out, out in public view. And so thought it required more consideration. The general concern, conclusions here, consensus seemed to be that their, their focus will be, just how compatible is the proposed artwork with the building? Does it, does it fit with it? They also made two recommendations for landmarking for buildings, one for the News Press Building, which was designed by George Washington Smith, not the tower, but the main building, was designed by George Washington Smith. And then 1129 State Street, the San Marcos Building, with the, you know, the big interior courtyard, and a lot of people aren't aware of. So those, those were the main items from that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pujol?
Thank you. I attended the City Council hearing on Tuesday, representing the Commission for the zoning information report, actually, the grand jury report on zoning information reports. And the first, the first item I'll report to you, I don't know if, how many of you actually watched the, the hearing, but the room was packed. Their, Room 15 was also packed. The police, I don't believe it was fire marshal, they looked like police, were turning away some folks from being able to come into the room. There were that many. Earlier in the day, the City Council heard the contract for the D-SAL plant, and my first thought was, well, most of these people are for that item. But in fact, no, most of them were for the zoning information report, the grand jury report results. So the city is required to respond formally to the grand jury's report this year, and their deadline, I tentatively, I think they, that we understood it to be August 11th as the deadline for responding. So that's what the hearing was about on Tuesday. There are 10 findings, and most of those in the audience and most of the speakers, vast majority of the speakers, were really speaking to the very first finding, which was, consider making the zoning information reports voluntary. However, as you know, we've done a lot of work over the last year, year and a half on this topic, most of which was, is still pending, and was pending at the time the grand jury concluded their study. So in the end, what the City Council decided is they, in concept, supported the draft letter by staff as a response to the grand jury report that basically is saying, we're already working on it, we think we have a good plan pending, and we're going to use an option or an alternative to address your same questions, but in a different way. And the one, the one point that held the council back from finalizing their vote on Tuesday was that the information in the letter itself, they felt, didn't really capture the flavor of all the work that had actually taken place. So the City Council appointed an ad hoc committee made up of the mayor and I think council members Hart and Francesco to work this week and come back, I believe, next week, next Tuesday, with a revised letter, August 4th, with a revised, with a revised letter that they could then finalize and pass on to the, to the grand jury. So, so it was a, basically, a confirmation that the work that we had already been proceeding with will at least be completed and tried out to see how those improvements work.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Monday of this week, Commissioners Campanella, Jordan, and I, as the Planning Commission Subcommittee, attended a meeting with Liz LeMone as the lead from staff, and we're very fortunate to have Ms. LeMone working with us, or I should say that we're all working together. There are two topics that are now central for the, the housing Subcommittee, and one is to devise proposed success criteria for this very important housing ordinance, to bring back to the full Commission and ultimately to the City Council for vetting and ultimately approval. And so we continue to work on that. I think we're making progress. Next month, in our August meeting, possibly also with the City Attorney's Office, perhaps Mr. Vincent's support, we're going to look more closely at what could become a potential gap in time between the conclusion of the 250 completed units slash eight years, and such time as the council would need to take a majority vote on continuation of the ordinance, a permanent, you know, enact, enactment of the ordinance, modification, revocation, what have you. And we're all very concerned, that is, those on the Subcommittee, about this gap in time. We don't want there to be some sort of a suspension where we revert to, I think it would be variable density, right, Mr. Vincent? Yes. So I think that staff is probably going to be talking to Mr. Vincent about that, perhaps he'll appear at our next meeting, who knows? But we're going to be trying to work on that very diligently in the coming months, bring that back to the Commission again for full discussion. But we're, we're pleased with our progress, and again, very appreciative of staff support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? One item that I want to bring up is, Commissioner Campanella raised the issue to me earlier this week, that with the cancellation of a lot of meetings, we have canceled a good many of our lunch meetings where we discuss items of background information and general discussions that don't rise to the level of a public hearing. And so I suggested to staff to talk amongst themselves, to see if they had any objection to, when we cancel a meeting, just move and have a special lunch meeting on the, the week that we normally wouldn't have a lunch meeting, to cover these items. So staff has said that that's doable. We would schedule a, a special lunch meeting when necessary. And now I'd like to ask the members of the Commission if anybody has any issues pro Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been actually pondering the same topic, so I'm glad you raised it today. It seems to me, we, speaking of rollover, we talked about unallocated or rolled over square footage, but I think in this case, to me, what's been rolling over for probably a year at least now are important items of discussion for the Planning Commission. We've discussed with staff, sometimes just among ourselves, and I think we're not, we're not getting to a point where we're giving enough time substantive, qualitative time to really working through those for some positive outcomes that, that would help us improve our efficiency and effectiveness, both on our own as a Commission, but also with staff. So I would support whatever recommendation you have with staff in terms of moving forward with the new process, whether it's updating the Planning Commission guidelines that we have already on the books, or whatever, whatever type of process is necessary to make those adjustments to our schedule. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lodge?
I just think I want, I would just wanted to say, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Commissioner Higgins?
Mr. Chair, I think it's a great idea. Whatever we can do in advance of difficult items, or complex items, or items with lots of history that may predate some of us on the Commission during lunch meetings is a fantastic opportunity that gets us to where we need to be in terms of our discussion last week for, I think, maybe more efficient hearings.
Okay. Commissioner Pujol?
I also think it's a good idea, and I assume we'd have some advance notice when it's scheduled.
Okay. So Ms. Galartí, in the future, when we're going to cancel a, a meeting that would normally have a lunch meeting, we should schedule a special lunch meeting on the normal meeting that wouldn't have a lunch meeting otherwise, so that we at least will keep one lunch meeting a month, or preferably two. So going forward, if you could do that. I don't think we need to adjust our formal Planning Commission guidelines and so forth. We can schedule a special meeting, so we, we could do it that way, just as long as it's agendized.
That is correct.
Okay. So that's how we'll proceed. Any other items from anybody? Okay, then, Commission is adjourned. Thank you.